All right, good morning. Welcome to our October 3, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. Call this meeting to order and ask Craig if he would say a prayer for us.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us the blessing of it. Father, thank you for life. Thank you for life abundantly, Father, that you provide to us. Blessings on our community, Father, that we sometimes take for granted. Help us not do that. Father, thank you for the opportunity and privilege of serving our fellow man, of serving this community. Father, of being a part of the governance of this county. What a privilege it is and a blessing it is to know that you've ordained it. Thank you for seeding these men, placing them in leadership. Pray that you would give them the wisdom and the discernment they need today to make good and wise decisions in Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen. All right, I want to public comment.
The planning commission first, Larry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go back to that one. Let's call our planning commission to order, and we got consideration and approval of August 29 minutes.
Most are approved.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve those minutes. Daniel seconds that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Old business?
Motion approved.
There is no motion then.
I just practiced.
Okay, well, second it then.
All right.
It's just me and you. I thought we'd just do whatever we wanted to.
It's just worse.
Daniel makes a motion to approve the old business.
Is anything you need? Anything you need?
Well, yeah, there are. Let's get on into the board meeting first.
Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Old business is behind us. All right, new considerations. First on the list is...
All right, so y'all didn't need to review those old business things?
Setting those two public hearings, A and B were together, right?
They're both, they're both...
Well, old business, the hearings are, the dates are, yeah. This is just a review if y'all wanted to.
Those are Jared's, all right, so he knows what's going on.
Okay. All right, so the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for McLean Lodge LLC on Hollybush Road. This property is located on the south side of Hollybush Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to mine four acres of a hundred and, of a one hundred, I'm sorry, of a 799 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1, residential estate district. That's an aerial view of that property. And this is just their vicinity map. You can see the location of the mine area down here on Hollybush. And then this is their map that shows the four acre exempt right there. That's where the mining will be done. They do plan to enlarge that site in the future and reclaim it with a lake or expansion of the existing pond. They have submitted their notice of intent to DEQ. These are views of that property on Hollybush. And then these are surrounding properties.
What kind of time limits you gonna put on it, Steve?
I've got a few little things here I was gonna put on there, but before we get there, show that location of where the actual mining is going to be. It's my understanding that it's not visible from any of those properties or the road.
All right, this is where they show the four acres. That's Hollybush right there. There's an existing little pond here, and I think a little cabin or a house sits right But it's, it's right there at the road. I mean, it...
All right.
Of course, today's just the planning meeting you'll have until, you know, the public hearing date for any kind of conditions or anything you might want to set.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna look at that some more, but this is what I'm proposing. It's 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, keeping a water truck on site, keeping the road clean, and haul routes, bond, stuff like that. We'll cover it, I guess, down the road. I really was only, for some reason, understanding that was gonna be, that's a large piece of land there, and it was gonna be further off Hollybush. Was my understanding, but I'll find out.
Make a motion to set the hearing.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Bubba's Dirt LLC on Highway 43. This property is located on the south side of Highway 43. They're seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a 19.35 acre parcel. It's to the right of the blue line, the area. This is an aerial view of that property. This property's zoned RE1, and this is the mine area here. That's the vicinity map, and then this is where they show the mining operation on that property.
Hey, Ms. Knight, would you back up just a couple slides? Right there. Show me where you think the other mining area is, just on that map. We're doing some more...
Well, we were up on 471.
That's done, but where was that, where was that located at?
That was on 471. They were hauling to 43 for the road project.
Hauling to 43 for the road.
MDOT thing. But this is actually on 43.
All right.
All right, and these are views of that property. They've submitted their notice of exempt operation to DEQ also. That's just a view of that property from the highway. And then these are surrounding properties.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to set that public hearing.
All right, I'll second. Daniel makes a motion to set it. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Oakdale Place LLC on Baker Lane and Highway 471. The property is actually located on the south side of Baker Lane, and there's one parcel that's located on the east side of Highway 471. This shows the outline of the property. The area in blue is gonna be Phase 1 of this development, and the red areas are future development. The property is zoned C2, and they're seeking the conditional use permit to operate a self-storage facility at 124 Baker Lane. That's an aerial view of the property. The area in blue is the B&amp;B office building there on Baker Lane. The facility will contain office space and storage warehouse space, as well as fully enclosed and covered parking, three-sided covered parking, and open parking of all types of recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and motor vehicles. This is their site plan. Again, this is Phase 1 shown in blue, where you'll have the storage of the vehicles, RVs and boats. There won't be any new construction of any buildings in Phase 1. He's gonna revamp these existing buildings, repair them as needed, and then he's going to renovate the exterior of this existing office building here on Baker Lane, and it'll be used for offices. The future expansion, he shows this parcel out on Highway 471 for future. There's an existing office in this house on Highway 471 now. He'll continue to use that for a while, probably for office, the office leasing, or maybe an onsite manager might live here. But for future development, he's proposing a climate, an upscale climate-controlled storage facility here on 471. And then the property to the east, there's two parcels here. He shows the parking areas here. And then out front, along the frontage, he's gonna build two buildings for office and warehouse-type storage. It'll have roll-up doors on the back, and he's got some renderings for the B&amp;B building and what these two buildings would look like. If it's approved today, we need to do it contingent upon the grading and drainage and runoff calculations being approved. We haven't gotten to that yet.
We mean approved.
This is the, well, I'm sorry. That would be later at the public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is the rendering that's proposed for the existing office building on Baker Lane. It's gonna have both stone, some ephes, tower here, and then the other two new buildings that will be built in the future will mimic that pretty much. They might have some different, more towers and different elevations, just to keep the roofline from being monotonous. And for the proposed climate-controlled, he submitted these pictures as something that it would be similar to in design, not color, just design.
Has he mentioned about the exterior, what, how much brick, how much is not on the, what can be seen?
On the B&amp;B?
Yeah. I mean, I know the existing building, you kinda got what you got, but I'm talking about like the units themselves.
The...
Many storage units themselves.
Oh, well, now, they...
I don't know if they're visible. I can't tell.
These, these buildings are already here. You come through a gate right here to get to the back of the property, and these are existing. They're metal buildings.
Oh, okay.
And he's just gonna repair the existing buildings and, you know, improve them.
But I see that on the future phases. What is that, is up there close to the road?
On Baker Lane?
This.
Yeah.
These are the new buildings for future that he plans to construct.
For what?
For office, storage use, combination there. Now, Mr. Rigdon's here today, Tim Rigdon. If y'all have questions, he probably might want to...
Nah, I'm just curious more than anything, just kinda, he's not looking for a site plan, I mean, a building review, an architectural review. I'm good. For our setting the hearing. I'll make the motion to set the hearing.
All right.
Second.
Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good set. All right, we move on to site plan, architectural review.
All right, so under the site plan, architectural review is for Lance Varner out on Highway 18. This is for his auction business. The property is located on the west side of Highway 18. He's seeking approval to construct a 5,000 square foot metal building for the auction business. This property is going to be a 1.80 acre piece that's cut out of this larger, almost nine acre piece there on Highway 18. That's an aerial view of the property. And then this is his site plan. The new building is going to be here. These are those existing buildings, the stone place and all, that's already down on 18. The property is zoned C3. He's proposing a brick Wayne Scott halfway up on the front of the building, and the sides and the rear are proposed to be metal. That's a view of that lot. And then these are pictures of the existing building where the stone place is. He says the new building will look the same as this, except for it will have two doors on the front. I don't know if y'all can see that, can you?
Nope.
I can't see it, but anyway...
I've said enough, I think, right by...
Two doors on the front, with a roll-up, roll-down door on it, and no post on the front. It will match that building in color, which is kind of a tan color. And Lance is here today too, Mr. Varner, if you have any questions for him.
Now you can see it.
He's proposing slag for the drive or the parking area.
Just like what's there.
Is that slag there, I guess? Yeah.
Mr. Varner, you having just, I haven't, can't quite get my hands on it. Are you having just a walk-through door on the front, or are you gonna do a roll-up door on the front and a walk-through there? Yeah, please do.
Yeah, come on up.
Let me, yeah, make sure, what we're gonna do is gonna have a roll-up door in the front for security, where we can...
I say roll-up door. I mean, you go, I said what you said about, I'm talking about really a literal roll-up door, like a 12 by 12 or 10 by 12 roll-up door to walk through and bring stuff back and forth.
No, no, no. No, it's strictly, it's strictly for security.
Strictly.
That door's gonna be rolled down when we're done and rolled back up. And so, yeah, the post, the red post won't be there. The actual porch is just gonna, this comes off the building. They don't have any posts on the front. You know, we're supposed, you know, we're asking about Wayne's coating, you know, if we, if we can work with that, if we need to do a little bit more on the front, the side.
I'm gonna go ahead and cut to the chase on this, Mr. Varner. I think you already know what direction I'm coming from, and I've already said it. I'm not gonna do anything less than three brick fronts, three on, brick on three sides.
The front and the two sides.
I realize the, the fire station behind it is metal, but two-fold one, it's not noticeable from the highway. When you, once you put your building up, once a convenience store gets built, it's not gonna be seen. And the last two buildings we put on highways in this county, we've made them put brick. We did a Dollar General down there at the very end of the county, almost in Simpson County, and we made the man put brick, and we did a Dollar General on 471 that all brick or split block. Another, add a little extra expense, but I have no way of countering the guy next to you at the convenience store, when he comes to me and says, "Well, you let Mr. Varner over here, cut it, and, you know, you gonna make me jump through all these suits architecturally." I just can't do that. I mean, I just, I don't know how I could do that. Plus, whatever you do today is gonna set the tone for everything else going on down 18. And in my personal opinion, these two small buildings here on your big track, when y'all get ready to do something else with it, you're gonna tear them down. Those are not the highest and best use of that property, you know, and those, those buildings are gonna be gone, and whatever else is gonna be bigger and better, you know, there, and you really need something there to kinda match up with it, in my opinion. Now, Mr. Bishop has an issue with slag. I don't. For a parking area, he wants asphalt or concrete, but he's not here, and I don't really, bother me that much to have slag, 'cause you can always come back and asphalt it or concrete it over later.
And we make some more money.
If, if, if these continue on, you wanna do something different, and you, and your clientele needs a harder surface to get off of, but I'm just not gonna budge on the, on the three-sided on the, on the brick, though, I'm afraid, or some type of split block or something along those lines on that, though.
Well, if we, if we... Would you be okay to do a three-sided? He's, my dad's too, his part, so if we're, we're willing to do the three sides, the front and the two sides, can we get this approved? If we can get that, you think we can?
Anybody else have a comment?
That's what we need to do. We'll be willing to, if you'll work us on the slag, we will work with y'all on the brick.
Slag, I don't, that's something y'all can take. You got a comment?
Contingent upon approval of the drainage.
That's right.
Yeah, drainage scene too, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we go with this with three-sided and slag, we'll leave the ground alone, and then y'all can get together all the other little details.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, that'll work, that'll work, Mr. Varner.
All right, we have a motion.
Yes, sir. Wait a second. Mr. Varner?
Just where the roll-up doors go over the walking doors, wouldn't, there's no way to break that. I mean, they would have...
Yeah, just where the roll-up doors are.
Yeah, well, yeah, I get that. That's not my, that's not my favorite, but you can always take that off too, down the road too, if, if, you know, the side. So, I understand, if you want security for it, I'm not going... Y'all have a problem with that?
No. All right, we have a motion by myself, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Varner. Mr. Varner, we appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to our nuisance property hearings. Mr. Slade?
First, first item under the nuisance property considerations is Item A, the Ruby Joyce Hoover Estate, nuisance property at 104 North Road. This is District 1. We'll open that public hearing. I'm gonna ask Renee to demonstrate. If there's anyone here on behalf of the Ruby Joyce Hoover Estate, please make your way forward at this time.
All right, so we've received complaints on this back in July of this year in regard to rubbish and debris in operable vehicles, appliances, and grass. These pictures were taken on the 22nd of August. And these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Those right there, yesterday, right?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. This property join a creek, I thought, was it a creek close to it? Off of Williams Road? Any, any, right off of Williams Road?
It's right, yes.
Yeah, isn't it a creek right there?
You turn on, yes, sir.
Yeah. That's where some of the problems have been, some things in the water at certain times. It's got, in creek, I think, too.
Isn't it, that's a...
It's a pond right next, on the other side of the road.
Okay.
I just done about washed my driveway out.
Yeah.
The stuff at the end of the trailer, we're finishing up this weekend. We have got, we've got it, not 100% pattern, but...
You know, this has been going on for quite a while, and we just got people travel through there, and that's, that's where the, it's not like we ride around, you understand? Look for that. This is, people call in, just like the sheriff gets a complaint, they have check into it. That's the same way that this is, and this has been ongoing. So, you have made great strides in doing that. I think, I don't know, Craig, in this situation, we can just go and declare it, and don't take this wrong, we'll declare it a nuisance. And we're gonna declare it, because that way we don't have to start everything back over again if you don't clean it up. So, I wanna go ahead and try to declare it a nuisance, and what that does, that gives you, will give you plenty of time in there to get this done. And then if you get it done, then that all just goes away. But that way, so, like, don't take it wrong when I say that.
Yeah.
The, the reason for that is if we don't do it now, and you don't clean it up, then we gotta go all back through all this again.
I understand.
So, that's just the way we do it, of kinda boxing it in to help us out, too.
Yes, sir.
So, I think that's, that's what I'd like to motion, to go and declare the nuisance, and they've, they've made great strides, and does that work with y'all?
Second.
And monitor?
Do you want us to monitor it for a certain period of time before we...
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll monitor it, but in between that time, it's declared a nuisance, and the time it goes further, we got a gap in there.
Do I need to call y'all or anything when I get complete?
Yeah, it'd be great, when they can come look at it, yeah.
Well, we'll come back out.
Yeah. Okay. You make sure they, I guess they got your number, so make sure they have your number before you leave. Okay?
Okay.
The purpose of the record, can we say that it's a 60-day period?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good. That sounds good.
From today, 60 days, that's kind of the deadline, to make sure that we have it adequately cleaned up.
Think you can do it, I think you can do it 30, on what you look like, it looks like.
I think so. It's looking better than...
Yeah, it is.
We, we got this.
Yeah, but I appreciate it. Thank you. It helps a lot. Thank you.
All right, Jared makes a motion to declare this a nuisance and give him a 60-day buffer to clean things up and let our office look at it. And Bob second set motion. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Yeah.
Mr. President, Item B, under the nuisance property considerations, is the Lily Low
Nuisance Property, 396 Hickory Hill Road. This is District 1. We'll open that public hearing. For the purpose of the record, in case I didn't do it, Item A, public hearing is closed. And so, we'll open the public hearing on Item B. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If there's anyone here to speak on the Lily Low Nuisance Property matter, please make your way forward.
All right, so we received complaints on this back in April of this year. The property is vacant. The owner is deceased. We've had some contact with her relatives. The daughter lives out of state, and she said that she was trying to find somebody to cut it and tear down the manufactured home, or she wanted to sell it. And nothing's changed there. We had originally gotten a complaint that people couldn't see traffic, that it was a traffic hazard due to the grown-up condition there, but that's been cut. County cut that.
Well, this is kinda the same story here. Try to find somebody, try to find somebody, so I just assume declare it a nuisance. Now, with that being said, who's gonna be...
We've made contact with a relative who apparently is gonna take responsibility for the estate. If they're gonna try to sell the property, they've got to have authority to do that, Jared.
Okay.
So, my, without knowing anymore.
Right.
We certainly can't state categorically, I would assume, that it's someone who actually has an interest in this person's estate.
Okay.
So, I would encourage our staff to simply continue communicating with that person, indicate to them that the board has taken action to declare it a nuisance, and suggest that the next step in the process is to take it up to Justice Court and see if that doesn't move things more quickly.
I'm good. I'll make that motion.
All right. Jared makes the motion to declare it a nuisance. Daniel second set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to set, I mean, to declare it a nuisance.
Public hearing on Item B is closed. Item C is the Eddie and Pamela Dillard Nuisance Property Consideration, 336 Church Road. This is a District 2 parcel. We'll open that public hearing. I'm gonna ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. If anyone here is here on behalf of the Eddie and Pamela Dillard Nuisance Property Consideration, please be prepared to come forward.
All right, so we received a complaint in June of this year about the grass, rubbish and debris, and the dilapidated home on this property. Mr. Diller did contact us and say he would get it cleaned up. These pictures were taken in June. And then these are the new pictures, I believe. They are. These pictures were taken yesterday.
All right, Mr. Diller, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Tell me about it.
I get it.
Well, tell me about it.
I don't know. I let a guy stay at home this fella. He stayed there, but he worked at the Fanning Water, and he works, uh, landscape right there, the mill. You know, he told me he was gonna get it taken care of, 'cause he worked with the landscape. He worked for the man in the landscape. It looked like he ain't did nothing, so what do I need to do?
Well, I need you to kinda oversee getting this thing cleaned up.
Okay, I will.
That's, that's kinda my main thing right there, and...
I will. I do. What I need to do? Just clean it up and cut?
Yeah, cut the trees back off of it, clean the property up, get the trash moved out.
I get him to do that.
We, we, we wanna be good neighbors over there.
Okay, I get it, I get, I take care.
All right, so...
I can do it.
All right, too.
I can't do it myself, 'cause I get him to do it, 'cause he worked for the landscape that's at, you know, that's a mill.
Yeah.
The landscape company, he run this, he do water, make for Fanning Water.
They got a crew can knock that out quick, you know?
That's what I know. And he told me he won't get it done, but then I told him about three weeks ago.
All right, so, so explain to him what's gonna happen...
I tell him.
On your side. What'll end up happening is if we can't get it done, they're gonna take your property up to Justice Court.
Okay.
And you got to deal with him up there on, on the legal side, and I don't think we need to go to there.
Okay.
I mean, I want you to tell me you're gonna get this thing cleaned up.
I...
We're going to come back here in thirty days and look at it. If it's not, I'm going to declare it a nuisance and we'll move it up. Do what?
End of month.
Yeah, thirty days. We'll just get you in contact with Ms. Renee's office, but, um, I'm just going to table it for thirty days and then if I got to come back, we're going straight up there. We're not even going to discuss it. We'll go from there. But so, that gives him a month to fix it.
That'll work.
Sound good to you?
That'll work.
The thing, the thing is, it all because you own the property, it all falls on you. Just because he's living there, you own the property.
Okay, I let, I let, you know, he told me he want to do it.
I, I know, I know you want to do the right thing and I'll give you the opportunity to do the right thing.
That'll work. Appreciate you.
So, uh, but you know where we're at in thirty days, so.
I know.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. As long as Ms. Renee and them have your contact information, be sure they can get in touch with you. So, Mr. Slay, I guess after you close it, I'll make a motion to table it for thirty days or next week.
That item C, public hearing is closed. Daniel's motion is to table for thirty days.
I second.
Thank you.
Alright, Daniel makes a motion to table thirty days. Jared seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item D is the Pauline Jordan nuisance property. This is at three forty-two Church Road, District Two. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If anyone is here on behalf of Pauline Jordan, please be prepared to come forward.
Alright.
Mr. Diller, you're not backing this thing again, are you? Come on back here and tell me again. Tell me how you're related to this person.
She been in, what, what do you call it?
Been in where?
Let's see, Woodford.
Hudson.
Hudson. Oh, it's been Hudson, I got you.
That's probably where she is now.
Well, so what are we going to do with her?
Her sister thing they do, so y'all need to contact her sister right next door.
You've got some contact information for them?
No, I never deal with them. I don't go nowhere. I had to stay. I got, you know, bad heart and C O P D, you know, all kinds of stuff.
Stuff's giving me a bad heart, Mr. Diller, you know? It's slowly wearing on me a little bit.
Yeah, I gotta have them see first.
Alright, so I'm just going to move her up to justice court then. Is that what you want me to do with her?
I don't know, but she ain't, she not going to show up, her mind anyway.
Alright, well, I think I'm losing my, slowly my heart, my mind, everything else. But this, this not your property though, is it?
I'm in my car. I didn't know where she was, why she don't show up.
I got you. So, alright, so thank you, Mr. Diller. I appreciate you. Alright, so I'm going to make a motion to move that to justice court since she's in. And, but you're going to take care of our, our agreement, right, Mr. Diller?
I got mine, go.
My man. I appreciate it. Thank, thank. No, it's just, he just.
We'll close that, we'll close item D, public hearing, and I believe Daniel's motion is just simply to declare the nuisance.
Declare the nuisance to, uh.
Staff to move it up to justice court.
Alright, Daniel makes a motion to move this matter on up justice by calling it nuisance property and this is the three forty-two Church Road.
Yes, sir.
Jared second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
I think I closed that hearing, but just in case I didn't, uh, close it. Item E, we'll open a public hearing on the Richard Vaughn Bent Creek Properties LLC nuisance property consideration, one sixty-seven A Cumberland. This is District Two. Again, that hearing is open. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If anyone is here on behalf of Richard Vaughn or Bent Creek Properties LLC, please be prepared to come forward.
This is just a review. Essentially, it's a success story. This one, you know, was pretty bad. And, uh, so we were just going to show you the after pictures.
You're trying to save my heart, aren't you, Ms. Renee?
Yes.
A success story. How many success stories do we get? One a year?
That's a good one, Dave.
I was due, I was due for a success story.
Somebody cracks a pretty mean whip up there.
Tell you what, we just don't play around up there.
They need to show those pictures up there.
Thank you, Ms. Renee.
That can't happen.
That must have been Pearl River doing that.
I don't know what that was. That couldn't have been our people, did it? I don't know. Thank you, Duane. Please, thank you. I'm sorry.
We will close that matter officially, uh, and we will reflect that no action is being taken or necessary. That's good to hear.
See, that's how you handle it, okay, boys?
Yeah.
Now write that down. Yeah.
Yeah, that kind of, yeah, doesn't work out.
I know, that's what.
Next up, Mr. President, is something in my area. If y'all recall back, uh, seven, eight, nine months ago, we rezoned the, the Greenfield Grass Farm or the Nichols Farm to agricultural use. They wanted to do, uh, fireworks, stand out there and make it legal. We still, I told them to have it moved back to an ag use. Uh, she is now getting ready to contemplate selling that property. Uh, how it's the best use is probably residential development. And, uh, we've already had an inquiry and then my idea was just kind of broadly discussed real quick, kind of what the fault was for the board far as what they would be looking at for houses out there, whatever the case may be. Just kind of give us some guidance, you know, so whoever's going to help her sell it would have an opportunity to, you know, not waste time and have an idea what, who to market to, what the case may be. So kind of, you know, he's got frontage on four sixty-eight and four sixty-nine, uh, you know, and, and, uh, public sewer and whole, whole, oh, nine yards. So, uh, I just kind of throw it out there. But, and we had talked once before that we didn't really care for cabbage patch houses anymore, felt like we had enough of those, which I, which I agree. Well, they're not really cabbage patch across the road. They're about, the first, first, first time owner, homeowners, but they're not, I wouldn't call them cabbage patch. To me, cabbage patch is, is hundred percent vinyl, around a twelve, thirteen hundred square foot home, you know, maybe a single carport, single garage. That kind of match up with y'all's definition of cabbage patch. Uh, and, uh, but I kind of look more toward at least a sixteen hundred square foot, maybe minimum on something out there, you know, and then the normal, whatever zoning.
What lot sizes?
Whatever the zoning, you know, I mean, he's, he's got ton of road frontage, uh, you know, so I don't know if, um.
Maybe R one B.
Which is.
Cause he wanted to do a, like a subdivision likes a crossroad?
Well, you say.
It came up one time before and they tried to do the same thing over there.
When you say sit just on the crossroad, tell me what your, what your impression is. Livos, Livos is a crossroad, and then there's Cedar Stone.
Four sixty-eight, what is that?
Well, four sixty-nine, excuse me, four sixty-nine. What is that, Cedar Stone?
Yeah, like that one. See, I think several, uh, way back, they tried to, they wanted to just basically that continued right across the other side. And, uh, we voted it down because it's too enough of those small neighborhoods saturated in that area, we thought.
Did they give a size, a square footed size?
It was, it basically, I think it was going to be what Cedar Stone is.
Probably in the neighborhood of between thirteen and fourteen hundred on average. So a medium density approach might be the way to go. That's eighty-five hundred square foot lots. You might suggest that you're looking for in the neighborhood of fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet on average, two car garage. Um, I think that, that probably sets, uh, a good tone and it also helps to control some of your traffic issues in that area, which are significant. We, we are right now dealing directly with traffic impact development at that intersection, which is a difficult intersection anyway.
Right.
So adding house tops right there, uh, you really do need to focus on the traffic, uh, as one of the aspects of that density control. So I would think maybe, maybe R one B is the way to go, with medium density, eight hundred square foot lots.
And, and I'm not asking everybody to commit one way or the other, just more just discussion, you know, just give them a some direction of what they're going to be looking for when they come back to the board because she's going to start actively selling the property here soon, so.
But she gonna sell it as, as far as a whole subdivision maybe?
Well, she's, she is not going to develop it. She's, you know, her family said that that's just too much for them to try to do, so she may sell off in thirty or thirty-five acre tracts over time. Or she may sell off oh hundred fifty at one shot and the developer will come in and phase it all in. So, you know, but they just need some kind of idea of what the board's appetite's going to be and that's just kind of some guidance. Nothing that's going to bind them today, what we say today down the road, but just some kind of idea of what, you know, what their expectation may be, uh, on that as well. But that, that kind of covers me, uh, Renee.
That was, uh, like the, kind of some thing came up before and the impact on schools and the height of the road, particularly that intersection, traffic.
Well.
Some of that.
M dot has declared that intersection, we're going to do some turn lanes and stuff like that, so as they wrangle up the money in the next year or two, they want to determine that. Uh, we had a, we had a convenience store problem and they, the convenience store got to do the two hundred thousand dollar work to work. And I said, I don't think so, you know, he didn't create it. Uh, but we got that worked out, so.
I don't have to tell you that even a medium density, one hundred fifty acres is.
Ton of houses.
A lot of houses.
Well, I think that, that was the problem before. It was the, and, and I remember, I, gosh, it's been ten years ago.
Well, I'm sure, you know, right with bubble busted, you know? But you got that, you got Greenfield Road coming out to, to Greenfield Station, I should say, once it totally develops out, it's going to be four hundred homes, you know? Uh, that in itself creates a problem, but, you know? But this is kind of FYI. That covers me, Renee, as far as what I, little guidance I need to give them. What is the next, besides media, what's the next step up? What's the next one?
The next meeting?
No.
Oh, from R one B, what's the next step up? It would be R one, which is eleven five on the lot size.
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand five hundred.
Yeah, that might be a. I will kind of, they can always look at the video if they want to get their own take on it, but probably somewhere in the R one B, the R one area, you know, maybe some green, more green spaces, maybe a little bit more, you know, kind of help control the density. Okay, I'm done. I got my one here.
Yeah.
Alright.
Did you want to talk about Mr. Petty?
Of course he takes, cause.
In here or not? I didn't know. I thought you mentioned.
Renee's and Sis' and I bring this up to you.
She's twisting your arm.
Uh, in this, in this development, a gentleman wants, is, is talking about wanting to do an RV park. Are y'all familiar with Timber, huh?
That wasn't what I mentioned. Mr. Petty.
Oh, Miss Petty, no, I, I figured out where my problem is.
I didn't open up two of them now.
No, no, forget that. We just.
The other, that's up to you. I did not mean that.
Well, he, uh, he, he something like, what is it up there at the reservoir, Timber?
Timberlake campground.
Timberlake campground, you know, he went up there, he moved back, he was like a three hundred people waiting to live, he seen a big demand, you know, and I said, well, it's probably because of the reservoir, but, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'll let him come back with more details. We'll, we'll bypass on that. We got more things to revolve from there.
I think that area up there really evolves or lives around that reservoir status, the reservoir and, I mean, I think that's the only reason that they stay, not maybe only, but that is a huge reason they stay backed up.
I agree.
But anyhow, alright, our next meeting will be held on Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, at nine o'clock in the morning.
Recession at that time?
Alright, Bob makes a motion to recess. We have a second. Jared seconds. All in favor?
Uh.
I thought, I thought Bob was just getting into confession mode. He was just going to start going through everything, get something on his chest and just get it all out there.
We are recessed from our planning commission and we'll take one breath and go, uh, back to our board meeting and we'll call this board meeting to order and let's get at it. Uh, what's first here? Public comment. Craig, help us on this. We've got some people. First on our list, AT&T. I thought we had AT&T here last.
That's Seaspar.
Oh, my bad, my bad.
But I am grateful that you mentioned that so that they don't feel like they're being singled out.
Man.
Well, our meeting with Seaspar went very well.
Went real well.
So I feel like.
You doing good?
I'm doing well.
They didn't go deep in the barrel now, had they?
You got, give your heads up. The other one went very well.
No, no pressure, right?
Yeah.
I want to hear Joey doing all the talk, whatever happens.
That's what we brought, that's what we brought him for. I'm Kim Partridge, area manager, engineering.
Joey Boyd, area manager, construction.
Brent Marshall, design resource manager.
Corey Haas, plant contractor supervisor.
So we just wanted to come before you this morning. We understand there's some concerns that we've had in the Ranks County area, wanted to address any concerns you have with some of our recent cable placement.
Uh, mine is not actually really with the cable placement. I mean, in my area, there have been water lines and of course some electrical and, and even our county, when we're doing ditch work, we'll hit one. That's not the issue. Uh, the issue is us and the residents not being able to get in touch with anybody. Uh, even our road manager has trouble getting somebody together and especially when we have, uh, weeks where residents are out of water three to five times during that week. And then, I mean, I understand these utilities and some of these water lines were laid down twenty, twenty-five years ago and even the utility people don't know where they're at. You're going to hit them. But these people are without water and they are frustrated. They want to vent at somebody and they can't find y'all, so they vent here. And then we have a little trouble getting in touch with y'all too. That, we've got to work together in my district and they're, they have, they may have different issues. Mine is a communication kind of deal. Communicate with my road manager, the people in this office and the residents. Be available because a lot of the workers out there, I don't, I do know firsthand a few times I've been, don't speak English. Uh, so that makes them even, you know, uh, maybe brings their temperature up a little more, but I know we can do better. I know y'all can communicate with us and the people if we just make that a goal.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say one thing on kind of our area. The only thing that gives, I'll let Mike Harrison, our road manager, speak on this, but what causes us problems is, is when you guys come out and you say, we're going to put, uh, the fiber or the cable down in a certain spot. And our guys go out there and that's not where they installed it at. Based on the plans and permits that y'all submit to us, we look at it and say, yeah, this is a great spot, put the cables right here and that, that should be fine. But what happens is after y'all separate from it, that's not what actually happens when they go out there. So they come out there and they put them in places that we'd rather not have them placed. So when they do that kind of stuff around those areas that we have to kind of maintain, being the storm sewers and curbs and things like that nature, they never get put back right. So the contractor's gone at that point. A year or two down the line, we start getting sinkholes and stuff starts collapsing and it comes back on us and it costs us a good bit of money. The residents are furious at us because we have to put them kind of in priority order on how we deal with them. So my biggest issue with AT&T, Seaspar, all of them that are coming in to put fiber is, is that when you submit the permits on where you want to put your fiber down, they're not going in those locations. So what happens is it makes everybody feel like that, and it's not you guys, I know the contractors are the ones that go out there and put them in, but they go rogue. And they feel like, well, I'm going to go ahead and just put it over here because there's less, uh, markups or less notifications in this spot that there's nothing in this area, so I'm just going to move it myself. And they don't communicate that area. So when we go back and we pull, we've been asked for red lines on areas that has come back where fiber's been put in, that's not where fiber's been put in. So they may end up going under curbs in some subdivisions where we got to go back and fix the curves because that's in our area. So it causes us just a tremendous amount of problems. Then we get in there with, with things not happening, happening inside that permit, we've got to go fix, we end up tearing up some of your stuff accidentally because we don't know stuff's there. So that's our biggest, Mike, did I hit that pretty close to it on the same point? That, that's our biggest problem is, is that the permits that are put in to put the fiber in is not what the contractors are doing. So that in turn just gets our phones.
Well, we would, you know, I'm hoping to, we would love to see some of those examples because I, I agree with you, that happened.
Yeah.
Um, for us to be able to correct our contractor, we didn't know where that happened.
Yeah. We, we, we've got a list of them, fortunately, so, so we're in a good spot on that, so.
You know, you got mine.
Yeah.
Email that to me and we will, uh, we'll take a look and, you know, cause we're correct.
Because we want AT&T going in the areas and we want, see, we want everybody that wants to put their service to their provider in these subdivisions because the people want, we want them there. But we just can't go rogue, you know, to where, because there's so many different things that are put. Um, we've had to change a lot of things in the county in the last several years as far as infrastructure going in because it's kind of been like the wild, wild west for a while and it just goes in without no kind of oversight, so we're finding a bunch of problems, you know, so. Um, Mike, is anything off the top of your head other than the permits not complying that's kicking off to you?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's about it. I mean, you know, my permit says one thing and it's being done another way and I have to get up there and stand in front of the board to get a permit approved for y'all. And what I'm getting approved is not what's happening out there in the field. And so that's reason why we stopped there.
So, so, so for example, what happened, a neighborhood or subdivision would come in, they would see something going on, so we would call and check our base on permits. We might not even have permits for these areas where, and it may not be AT&T, but we may have a contractor in there putting, putting fiber in that's cut something and we don't know how to contact them to get, we know problems are going to happen. I know stuff's going to get tore up. That's just part of the deal. But we have no way to follow up to figure out what's going on or who to contact and it's Friday at six o'clock and everybody's gone and they come home for the weekend and nobody comes back to work on Monday. And then the residents just go crazy over the weekend. So it makes us look like we do a poor job of managing the infrastructure going into the county. And I think we do do a poor job of that. County does. So we're trying to make ourselves better on our part, but we've got to hold the contractors more accountable to the things they come in through to make our area better. So I put it on me, not you guys. We, we got to be tighter with our permits and inspection process to be sure we're right, not just with AT&T. I'm not pointing at y'all, everybody. To be sure we put a good product in for the people that live out there. So that's my take.
Well, that's our goal. We don't, you know, every time that our name is brought into, because you know, it used to with us, there was no competition, you know, now we have lots of competitors. Um, so we want to do the best job we can so that people want to buy our services. If we're destroying their yards or cutting their water lines, they don't really want our service.
Yeah.
So, um, we, we, we'll make an effort to do a lot better with, with, you know, communication. Um, what, what we'll do is we'll get contact lists together. Um, and Daniel, I'll reach out to you and get your email address and.
Yeah, we'll get it. I'll get, I'll get the stuff to Mike.
I'll have you, you know, we'll, who you can call, last, you know, all the way up to, to mine or Ben Bird, he's the other construction area manager. You can call us anytime, twenty-four seven. We, we sleep with our phones.
And I, and I think y'all are pretty much built out close to it, aren't you? Aren't y'all pretty close to being known?
Pretty close.
Yeah, we're, we're done with that light gig overlay. So anything you see going forward would be what we consider greenfield, new subdivisions.
Yeah.
So we've been done for six months, three months?
Yeah, we've been done six months with that program. We, uh, of course, we have a lot of customers buying high cap circuits that are high, you know, high fiber, um, circuits that we, we are still placing a lot of fiber. Um, so, um, anyway, yeah, we'll get you a contact. Communication is not, should not be an issue.
Right.
Um, that, where you can get in touch with somebody somehow with us, that's.
And, and the main thing is on those, the reason those permits are just so important to us is if we've got other projects going around, we just want to be sure that we know where everybody's stacking up their chips, right?
Well, that's the purpose of the permit is for the contractor to have it on hand and to have a record of where.
So if they get out there and they say, I don't need to put it right here.
Right.
And they just go rogue and put it somewhere else and we get out there, that's where our problems come.
Yeah, and I think that's, uh, again, it pulls down communication.
Well, I, I believe some of this is that they do get a permit and it is intended for it to be six foot from over here and they get out there and after running across the water line twice because the water line's in the wrong place and it's doing like this, they say, well, I can just jump over here. I know where the water's at, I know where electric, and then they're outside the permit. We just need community. We need it. At that time.
Yeah, when that happens, just call.
Mike and say, this permit won't work. This water line running like a snake.
You know, and I.
We know it's not set in stone.
Yeah, you know, um, a lot of municipalities are, everything, they want everything in a back five feet. Well, I don't, the back five feet is pretty full.
Yeah.
But we shouldn't be violating from that without talking to you guys.
Well, and that's the thing, when you get out there and you see you can't put it where the permit was, just contact our road guy and say, hey, look, we, we got to move it. He's going to say okay, but we, we just got to know what's.
Yeah, it's.
And are y'all able to produce those red lines after everything's done to come back and show us where everything's put down?
Yeah, and what we would like to do is for the contractor to contact the engineer. The engineer can contact Mike and we can do it together. The engineer would do the red line, you know, we would get those red lines and submit them back to the process.
Yeah.
So yes, sir, we can definitely.
Perfect. Mike, what else?
Yeah, if I can add one thing, and you guys may already be doing this, but we need really good signage at the site of the project. It's not just about having communication that the county can make to you guys and vice versa. Uh, what we would like to do is for problems to be directed to the problem causer. So, I, it's part of our process, it's part of the permit, you're required to have signage on the job site. So you need to let the residents know it's AT&amp;T and here's a number to call if you've got a problem. That's critical. And if we're not doing that, and I don't know if we are or not, then we need to be doing it, 'cause that's what the permit says. Well, it's gonna start saying it. I wanna see the signs out on the job site, "This is an AT&amp;T job." If you've got an issue, don't call your supervisor, call us.
But they're gonna call, but they're gonna call us, you know, so.
I understand that, I understand that.
The program and Corey, we put door hangers on every door.
Yeah.
We put signage out everywhere that we were working. And that was just specifically to Lightgate. In our BAU business, we're probably not doing a big job of that.
Yeah, just make sure your vendor, just make sure your contractor.
Subdivisions overlaying fiber. So that's why we did that, 'cause we were coming through established manicured yards and, you know, I can only imagine someone comes in and tears up my yard.
Make sure the Vinnie's got signs on their trucks that says, "We're working for AT&amp;T today."
Or whoever they are. You know, there's so many contractors out here working and doing this. I mean, most of these guys out here doing work is third parties up. And they have no big guy on, they either driving a bread truck, a van, or a minivan truck out there.
Right.
You know, it's just people, and it's a lot of y'all.
So maybe we should say, Devini, or whoever Devini has subbed it out to, needs to have the signage so that the residents know who is out here. Who is in charge of this, which is AT&amp;T, if it's y'all's, if it's y'all's job. So, we just need residents better informed who's out there in their yard.
That's it, thanks for coming in, that's.
Thank you.
That went pretty well.
That's good at Seaspire.
Yeah.
We have cards too, we can leave.
Anytime I get to see Joey Boyd's a good day for me, you know? You're lucky, you're lucky people.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, they can. Joey's probably deleted my numbers from his phone, so be sure he puts it back in there.
All right, next on the list, Carl Franco. No extra days.
You know, I'm kinda worried about Daniel's heart. Uh, you know, in our churches, we've been putting defibrillators.
It's fragile right now, it's fragile, Carl.
If you're gonna be dealing with AT&amp;T, Seaspire, and architects, we need to have a defibrillator put in here because.
We got one right in the hallway, right in the hallway.
Uh, I don't have a whole lot today. I'm thinking about coming back Monday and giving, Monday and giving more detail. But we do have a pay application for the courthouse. This is down on the agenda that we've reviewed and we would recommend, just to kinda update the status on all the projects. On the misdemeanor facility, we issued a substantial completion last month, August 29th. So they're in the process of actually finishing the punch list. And I think there's actually detainees and prisoners that are going into the facility. There's gonna be some credits coming back to the county on that. We're just, they're waiting on, trying to get all those organized. But I know we've got some allowances that have not been used. So eventually there'll be ultimately some money coming back. And I know the contractor will be issuing a pay application pretty soon for ninety-five thousand. But there's still about two hundred thousand dollars left in the contract, which includes retainage. And I'm thinking that there's gonna be a credit of somewhere around fifty to sixty thousand dollars coming back to the county. Everything's all said and done on the misdemeanor facility. Uh, there is an issue that will, that Tim and I have been discussing. We got involved with the city of Brandon and a sewer issue, but we'll, I have to get to the bottom of that. But I'll bring that when it comes up. Uh, actually, the sewer pipe slid down the hill and everybody's trying to determine who's responsible for that, as you can imagine. Uh, on the courthouse, uh, they're, we're meeting later on today on scheduling. They're trying to get through.
Assuming everything that we've approved, days that we've approved, what is the contract end date? When should the, all of the stuff side, is it?
Went perfect.
Sometime, sometime.
Legally, I guess, contractually, when was that date?
Uh.
Is that date? If you don't get it, Monday's time.
Yeah, let me do it Monday, because there's two actually. There's one that they've requested and then there's one that you guys have approved. And, uh, you know, they hadn't really been approved extensions in the last few months. So I really need to present both of those to you. And I was doing that last night, but I'm not sure, it's gotten complicated. I'm trying to find all, make sure I've got, give you all the correct information. If I can do it Monday, Bob.
Oh, that's fine.
I'll have that Monday. And like I say, we're gonna meet with the contractor today and I need to get their input more involved and see. But right now, to be honest with you, they're looking at December to be finished. I talked to them.
Well, I really wanna talk about that date. And I'm not talking about the real date, I'm just kinda with the contract.
Yeah, I'm gonna get, and I've got that.
I'm really getting curious about where the sets all end up.
Right, right.
The number of days they want, the number of days we think they can't have, how much we gonna penalize them for.
And I've got all that, I've been track, tracking, I just wanna go back and double check.
'Cause there's ten extra days on this next item coming under Miss Wanda's section, you said?
Yeah, well, we're not gonna give the days there either. We'll both pay it, you know, just, if we just start paying it, that might, well, no, that's not gonna change it, we still gotta have money.
Well, I'll have, I'll have that Monday. And now, there's still some credit that's gonna be coming back too, we anticipate on that job. Last I checked, and the information I've got from the contractor, they still have forty or so thousand dollars of credit and dirt work that the board has approved, but doesn't look like they're gonna use. We still got eighty thousand dollars in a contingency allowance that, you know, we hadn't used, that we hadn't used. Now, I don't, I anticipate there may be some of that, but certainly we don't anticipate using the majority of that. So, there'll be some credit coming back on that too. But I will have, come Monday, I will have had a chance to double check my numbers so that I give y'all something accurate. You weren't here the other day, but the board approved the roofing contract for the EOC.
No, did they really?
Drafting that up, so.
I think that may be, when do you think the completion of that will be? Twenty, twenty-two?
They've got, they've got somewhere a hundred, a hundred and twenty days to get it done. And that is a lot more complicated than the DHS building, which they're just about through with on that. So, it's the same company was low bidder on that. They've done a good job on DHS. I, and I've talked to them, they're comfortable with their prices. And so I think they'll do a good job on the EOC also. And then on the, the only other thing that we've been working on is the Chancery renovation. We kinda slacked off on it a little bit, 'cause we really, we don't wanna put it out for bids until we know when the courthouse is gonna be finished, 'cause we don't wanna have, get bids now and they won't be any good by the time the courthouse gets finished. So, we're kinda waiting till the end of this year before we finish that up. And it may be that the better bid marking time is right after the first of the year to get good prices, 'cause you can't, can't do anything to, they move out of there anyhow. So that, that's where we're at on all that. But I'll have, I'll really have a more written summary of all that come Monday for you. But I've got, you know, if you've got any questions now, I'll be glad to answer.
I'm good, other than days, but we're good.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll see y'all Monday then.
Appreciate it, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
All right, Carl, thank you very much. Mr. Slade?
First item under my section is the action to authorize access to our GIS data by Mississippi Emergency Management Agency at no cost to MEMA. We need the board to authorize that. And this action would be in recognition that Rankin County will be provided access to Crisis Track, which is the, uh, the computer program that's being developed through Mississippi Emergency Management Agency at no cost for Rankin County.
Special counsel approve.
Sorry.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds it under discussion. Can I ask Mike, what's the difference where we're at today and where we were at a few weeks ago, whenever this first came in? And we wanted to look at it closer.
Several things. We were able to go in and look at the program itself, and I was really looking at it from the, the other end of the spectrum of, they want it to do damage assessments and I get that. My deal was, what other benefit can we get from it? And that's what we went in and looked at. And very well pleased with the parts that we're gonna be able, actually, we're gonna get the entire program that we're gonna be able to use on a day-to-day basis. Um, at, we're just doing the things that we do. Again, I'll remind you, this is a program that I looked at about a year and a half ago and it was just cost prohibitive. I just didn't feel comfortable bringing it to you guys for another software deal. It was just, we'll just do it on pen and paper. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of money. So, Mike Chaney's office, Mississippi Insurance Department, and MEMA went in together and they purchased this thing for the entire state. I talked to, I had a meeting yesterday morning with Director Michelle. And one of the other things, and I told him, I said, "Man, you really need to change and shift gears on your sales pitch, because this may, may actually apply to a lot more counties to really help them out." And one of the big things is, and he didn't even think about this until I brought it to him, but this is gonna also give us a off-site, secured, encrypted storage. Meaning, if something happens to Lance's office tonight and this building burns to the ground, hush, and our data is gone. It's a matter of Lance go to Best Buy, buy a four hundred dollar laptop, and boom, you're back up and running with all our data that you've paid a tremendous amount of money for in about an hour, which we don't have that right now. We don't have any off-site, obviously, secured, encrypted data, which that's not gonna cost us anything either. If you just, but if you took everything else away and, and had our, well, call Marcus and ask him, "How much is it gonna cost?"
We can't call him anymore.
So, well, Marcus, if you're seeing this, his eyes are lighting up. That's a very, very expensive endeavor, very expensive.
One of the things that we were, I guess, leery of was them having our data and passing that data on to others.
Director Michelle has assured me that this data, it has been and always will be the ownership and the property of Rankin County. It will never go to a third party. And there's also, I'm sure, Mr. Slade's about to speak to this, that there is a memorandum of understanding that explicitly puts that out there. But at no point will it ever go to the third party. And that was our big hangup on the front end. We were like, "Whoa, hang on just a second. We're not, it's not gonna release our data to anybody. We don't wanna release it to anybody, period, regardless of who you are. And definitely not to a third-party independent person to take the words from Mr. Crowell. So you have an ex-employee that goes rogue and takes our data for all our citizens, go pawns it off on the black web. Hey, we got issues. And obviously, we wanna prevent that from ever happening." And I think he's about to speak to them on you.
So we, there's a non-disclosure agreement that we require to be signed, to be signed by MEMA. And it prohibits them from transferring that data to a third party without our consent. So I'm satisfied with, especially Steve, with the quid pro quo. I'm satisfied that they will honor our non-disclosure, that we require everybody to sign, that we transmit data to. You know, we, we transmit that data as long as it's paid for and a non-disclosure agreement is signed. So, I'm not troubled by it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Hey, I need to abstain from the vote of it.
Well, all right. We have a three ayes and an abstain, so I think that motion passed.
It's to the Department of Insurance, who I work for. It's just an ethical thing. I know it can, it gets silly, but.
Just an ethical thing. Well, maybe I should abstain too. All right.
Maybe.
It's a great habit.
I would appreciate, yeah, I would appreciate your not doing that, Bob. Yes, as legal counsel, I would appreciate Bob not doing that.
Item B, under my section, Mr. President, assuming that that was all tongue-in-cheek, is a discussion of a potential action to authorize the board president to enter into an MOU with the city of Brandon for one of three possible capital improvement projects that would qualify for the use of county bond proceeds. Would be either, number one, a public street improvement project. This would be similar to the MOU that was authorized with the city of Pearl. Number two, the NPO signalization projects that Brandon qualifies for, which would cover up to three intersections inside the city limits. Or number three, the completion of what we know as the East Metro Parkway, this south leg of the East Metro Parkway that would connect to Crossgates Boulevard. And you would also authorize the county administrator to issue payment in the amount of two million dollars upon execution of the MOU, understanding that any project selected must be completed within the three-year timeframe, beginning September 1st.
We went, Craig and I went Monday afternoon, the board had a special call board meeting for this particular reason. I think they had other business too, but, and I just point-blank asked them, I said, "Guys, I need, what way about East Brandon Parkway? What's your pleasure?" You know, and Ted Sanderson and his people were there, they made their pitch. Their board said that there's no way they had enough money to tackle on East Brandon Parkway at this point in time. Nothing would meet our timeline. And I said, "Fine." I said, "Now I've gotta go back to my board now, because that has changed. I would like to do something with this money in District Three, and South House of Brandon is in District Three." Uh, so I said, "Give me three items, how many you want, I don't care. But just spell it out in parties. Give me number one party, number two party, number three party, number four party." So we don't have to keep going back, you know, "Well, we like this project, you know, we won't put this money here, we won't put this money there." So, long and short, long and short, they came up with these three things. I'm asking y'all's indulgence, or asking y'all's approval, you know? You know, Brandon, and I'm sure it's all the other municipalities too, we have the same problem, are way behind on overlay. I think Brandon's probably more so than anybody else, but, you know, this is a small drop in the bucket for them, but it would go a long way to help them get started on some much-needed overlay projects in the city, so.
So these would be priorities as established, as far as we could determine, as established by the Brandon Fort of Alderman, the public street overlay project, the metropolitan signalization project, and then the East Metro Parkway project. Bob mentioned East Brandon, and I wanna make sure that there's no confusion. East Metro and East Brandon are not the same project. East Metro, obviously, is the Flowood connector between Crossgates Boulevard and Flowood at Dogwood.
I believe, Steve, part of this overlay money would hit Crossgates as well. So it would hit both of our districts, uh, in three and four, to help there. They kinda, kinda start staying in to Crossgates, and I say, "Hey, guys, what is it, you know, don't forget about District Three."
Well, I'll give you, I'll give my two cents on it. I just wanna think about it for a little bit, just to, that's kinda the first time I saw it. But, um, I guess my, you know, my question is, in general, are we opening up a can of worms on the cities for overlay money? Historically, we don't give overlay money to the cities that don't, do we? I mean, I'm asking, I don't know if we do, have we done it?
Not out of budget or not out of cash, but this is a, this is a one-time deal. I mean, I say one-time deal, it's a one-time deal to a bond deal. Next bond deal, you know, who knows what y'all wanna do with money then.
It's identical to what was done with the city of Pearl a month ago, an MOU that was authorized by the board for the purpose of a specific identified project that covered probably on the order of about eight public streets inside the city of Pearl that were identified for purposes of project.
How much was that, do you remember?
Uh, I don't. Approaching a million dollars.
A million is what we agreed to on that.
Approaching a million dollars.
This is, this is my whole, whole point, you know, in part of this bond project. When the money went from sixteen million to thirty million dollars on the deal. You know, District Three, you know, I won't speak to the ill will of Wilcox and I'll be glad to, we don't have time. But not a lot's been done in that district and it is, and I saw East Brandon as an opportunity to get involved and do something for a worthwhile project. But I'm not prepared to give money to sit in the checking account for ten years. And with y'all on that, I think it's just, it needs to be put to use, you know? I think, you know, Mike can attest, I mean, there's probably some roads in District Three that can be overlaid, sure. But for the most part, District Three, we had, our supervisor's done a good job building roads, they're in decent shape. City of Brandon folks, I pay county taxes every year, you know, I don't see shit for it, sorry. I don't see anything for it, you know? And this is an opportunity to get a little bit back to the city over and above what we do from time to time, anyway. That's how I view it.
'Cause we give them money, I mean, we give them money for roads.
We give our city money for roads. They get part of, they get every, you know, that's what's over and above.
Well, give our city money for roads, they get part of, they get every, you know, that's what's over the above the normal, what are, are taking.
On the bottom, most of this is actually neighborhood streets. Most of this, what I was describing would be neighborhood streets.
Well, they cross, they subdivisions, yeah, I mean, I mean, city streets.
I mean, it's a neighborhood, in a sense, rather than like a major road that everybody uses.
You know, if you want some major roads, I got Burnham Road up there, we got Shallow Road.
Then they have that Burnham Road, then they let that go back, they had that, they had that in NPO.
Well, it kicked back to the curb, I think, that and the Shallow Road.
Well, um, what, the signalization, when I talked to them, they were telling me they were doing the signalization.
That's part of the NPO project.
Yeah, right, they were gonna keep it.
They were going, they haven't totally, they, best I can tell, they haven't totally kicked anything to the curb. That was the, the indication was to push Shallow and, and Burnham Road back to NPO, take those projects. Do the initialization, I think, 2 on 80 and the one down on 18 in Lewis Wilson.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, you know, that's why I gave them, asked them to give three choices, because if y'all don't really want to, if it's not your appetite to do the overlay, you feel like there's a bad signal, that's fine, they wouldn't do a, that's initially, you don't like that?
What kind of money is a signalization costing then?
There, it's a 50% match on it, Jared, and I think all three of those projects would be even beyond the, the figure that you're giving.
Lewis Wilson is, is, is a significant one, because they got that bridge going across the street.
Okay, okay, I saw that.
I think having to redo that part coming in is what's driving that cost up in that project.
And let's don't forget that it's, it's not, when we hear signalization, we think of traffic signal, the actual, it's, it's an actual adaptation of the intersection to conform to NDOT specs, there's a lot of road work that has to be done with that.
Well, I tell you, when they, when a couple of them called, talked to me, and they said they were doing, keeping the signalization, they didn't imply that, it, it didn't.
They are, I mean, they, they, two of them.
I'm saying, keeping it in that it wouldn't be on this list, they were, they were wanting basically just Castle Woods.
No.
I mean, Crossgate, I mean, yeah, I mean, Crossgate, yeah.
Cause what we.
But anyway, I'd like to, I, I mean, I just got hit with it too, I'd like to think about it, I mean.
Cause didn't, we, we gave them, how much we give them for, was it Henderson?
No, Lutney.
How much we give them for Lutney?
150.
150 for that?
Yes, sir.
And we did, you know, whatever we're doing, they play in the, uh, uh, Community Center, Civic Center, one of the parking lots.
Where?
City Hall, part of the polling place, they decided to let two precincts into, to City Hall, they've got some gravel parking over on the west side. As part of their polling place, we agreed to, voted to, uh, overlay or chip seal that gravel area for District Park.
No, you're talking overlaying.
Oh, overlay, whatever, 58,000 dollars what we agreed to spend.
Y'all feeling good, weren't you?
It wasn't very, it was so narrow, I didn't love it, look at that.
Parking, well, uh, I was there.
Me too.
Night before last, and this was in the middle of the week, and every parking spot there was full, and people were parked out on the curtilage, so I don't feel bad about that, uh, because this was a, I mean, this wasn't a big event. Those cars just fill that parking lot up quicker than you think they do.
Yes. You, you guys are in total control of your bond proceeds, total, and so, these are options that are available. If you decide that you would like to focus in or narrow down on any one project, even one that's not listed here, we need to communicate that back to the City of Brandon, obviously, I don't expect them to turn down help from the county at all, but if you're intending to focus down on one particular project, uh, we, we need to know that as soon as we can.
I mean, I, any of these three, you know, or if you think of something else you wanna do, if you know what it needs to be done. But I believe that the.
The signal and then interchange is, tell me, where are there?
Two of them are, two of them are on 80, best I can tell, I kinda, I don't know exactly which two signals there are, and it's just like, like Craig says, it's, it's the realignment, so when you pull up to it, it's, it's not just, not just light, it's not do the, you know, I don't know if it includes the archway lights, it may be part of it, but it's also to do the realignment so that the turn lanes and all kinda match up with it. I don't quite get it, I'm not an engineer, I mean, maybe Tim can, can, what is, what is, when they say, uh, signal light, uh, in, re-alignment, what does that typically mean?
You really hit it perfectly, it could be, it could mean, well, the, the realigning of the lanes, changing the signals, you know, it has to be the same time. I don't know that I've ever, uh, really seen a project where it's just the lane align, they need to put new signals up for that kind of thing, so that's more than likely, it's new signals and then adjusting turn lanes and such often.
My understanding is that that's what Brandon's doing, that it's both the lights and the lanes.
But one of, I mean, two you say are on 80, and one would be.
Down there at Lewis Wilson and, and Highway 18, where you're coming off 18 to get into. You got a bad traffic problem in the morning time and the evening time down there, and I guess it's getting worse during the day, cause you got the high school right down the road, and people are coming into 18, coming into Lewis Wilson from 18, it's a much-needed red light, you know, and it would help out the area in District 3 from that standpoint, for the beneficial part of the deal, and I hate that it's, it'd be truthful for me, the highway department should be doing it, but, you know, it looks like we're gonna start doing more on Highway 1.
Why would they not, have they been approached?
Oh, yes.
Well, I don't wanna get into that.
Yes, they've been approached, you know?
I think, I think another signal that they are exploring is at Shallow and Lewis Wilson.
That's one you're talking about, wasn't it?
No, sir, this is, this is at the end of the bypass.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is there, is there any, is any critical timeframe on this, like, right now, I mean?
Well, our three-year, our three-year clock is running, and so.
But if you're gonna pave streets, then there's not a, I mean, you just cut that deal and say, strike out, I mean, that's not the three-year doesn't phase that deal. I, I just want, I wanna.
Think about it, that's fine, but I just, I, I just don't want to languish with it, uh, you know, because we are running on timeline, uh, with.
I'm talking like today.
Yeah, we don't have the money.
Well, I think they got the money, though.
Well, I mean, we're not.
No, you've got the bond money, though.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not like it has to be the day you're on.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's why, I just wanna look at it.
And, and.
Since you're gonna be missing Monday.
So, so they're gonna do.
You gonna do it Monday?
Well, why?
NPO, NPO money, so they're not gonna do anything with their NPO money?
Well, I think part of this, and this, this signal and this realignment is part of the NPO.
It is.
I mean, it, the, the two, two, Shallow and Burnham was the, the overlay project, and the signal realignment was part of, cause I know the 18 and Lewis Wilson signal down there, that's part of NPO, I know that's part of it, and I assume when he said, he, he throws these three together, that these two on 80 are also part of it.
Where, where are they talking about building a sidewalk too? Said that was something, yeah, down Lewis Wilson, that's what he was telling me, something about a sidewalk, is that part of the NPO?
I don't know where you gonna put a sidewalk on Lewis Wilson.
Something about Lewis Wilson and a sidewalk.
Oh, I think, Lewis Wilson comes into 80 right down the street here in a, in a red light, that may be part of the sidewalk.
That's what it is.
That's got to be.
It's part of that bridge project.
I guess the 2 million, though, is that, do they got a design project, like, say, do they know how much 2 million covers on the overlay? I mean, they've gotta get the streets picked out, and they know which one, they've figured out.
How they actually got it picked out, I think there's a discussion amongst the board, their board, as to what it's going to be, uh, but there's a lot of, you know, they kept throwing out Crossgates and a lot of, you know, piping and stuff like that in each of the plays.
If you call Bob from Monday, their Public Works Director actually had a map that demonstrated all of the roads that could potentially be covered with the county's assistance here. So, they actually have a working map that can be produced, if you guys are interested in looking at it, we can get you a copy of that, uh, so you'll, you'll be able to see what their plan as it relates to street improvement would be.
So, this is not, this, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, it wasn't just overlay in Castle Woods.
Crossgate.
Crossgates, I get that too, all right, all right, in Crossgates. It also had to do with a, a lot of, uh, culvert repair, or replacement.
That's correct, that was mentioned. Yeah, all of that cost is included in the cost estimates that were discussed.
There's no sense in going in and putting in if you're gonna have to, if you're, if you're culvert shopping, you know? Yeah, but what, what information do you want, do you need? Do you wanna see these lists, do you wanna see what's, what they're looking at doing on option 1, and I find out more about option 2?
Sounds like we may need to give good information on the signal projects.
Is that what this is for, matching money, or they're gonna just turn their money back in, and we're gonna pick it all up? Because, see, like, the signalization, if it's the NPO, is this, it had a whatever match.
This is, to my understanding, if, if, if we did the initial, with the signal, this money would cover their part of it.
That's the match.
Satisfy the match with NPO, and they could go, they could move forward with that project.
Well, we're making, we're doing the matching.
Yeah, our money would essentially be the matching.
So, 2 million would match it?
Well, a bit of a half, I think, and 500,000.
Yeah, I, I stand to be corrected that, um, that if they choose to do all three signals under the NPO regimen, that, that this will not cover it.
Right.
They will be short even on their match, that's my recollection.
So, if we don't put the money up, they can't do any of the signal.
Well, not right now, they, based on what we heard.
Aren't they under a timeframe on the NPO?
Well, that's not what they told me, though, he told me that he was, they were gonna let Burnham Road go back, and they were keeping the signalization projects.
The project.
I think that's right.
I think that's the mayor, well, they hadn't, go to a board meeting, you know, but that's the, that's what the mayor wants, you know, right now, there's kind of a, you know, a, a red line between the, the mayor's desires and what the board is, is wanting to try to do, uh, so.
For the purpose of, of what's before you today, I think what I'm hearing is we want to put this agenda item on Monday, is that what I'm hearing?
Daniel's like, I'm gonna be here Monday.
I want, I'd like everybody to be here when we do that, and to be quite honest with you, I'm not sure Monday might be a problem for me.
Well.
Seriously.
If y'all aren't gonna be here, if you put every bit of that money in my district, I'm good. Now, I'm, I'm playing.
I'm starting to get a little nervous about Monday now. We need to know.
I'd text him Monday.
We don't have to know, we don't have to know.
No, you can always recess out.
Oh, no, I'm, 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 seriously, I may not, I'm trying to, I won't know the last minute.
I'm gonna put the information together on the overlay project on the street.
Signal.
The, the signal realignment, get more detailed information on that, if the folks here on Monday, they won't have a shot about it, and if, if there's the three that wanna move on it, we'll move on, if not, we'll put it off on 15.
Is there anything that you guys need to know if the decision's made to move in the direction of East Metro Parkway, finishing that project? Is there anything that we need to know in advance now?
Well, you said the East Metro Parkway can't happen, right? I mean, they can't, not in the timeframe?
That's the.
Oh, no, we can get East Metro Parkway, this is the Flowood Connector, Daniel.
Yeah, that's East.
We can do that, East Brandon is a different animal, that one's not a three-year deal, and it's off the table as far as the city is concerned.
Possibility.
East Metro, yes, it's the last leg, they've got most of the money, according to what we are told.
Is this enough to do the last leg?
We don't know that answer to that question.
Well, supposedly, what I was told was, they got enough money to get to Old Brandon Road, and this, and this, this would, this 2 million would take it from Old Brandon Road up to the intersection of 80 and Crossgates Boulevard, and that would be that, that rework of that four lane right through there, and that would, in the essence, finish it up through Highway 80. Technically, I think it's mostly gonna be interstate, but they're all willing to stop at Highway 80.
Correct.
Get, 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 get that point. You know, he's, he, you know, Bush told me that, you know, you talk to any of your mayors, they'll, on the commission, they've got close to 10 million in the bank, you know? And I think they're at 12 to 14 or something.
What were they talking, yeah, I think it was about 14.
They wanted to finish.
What, uh, was there some, was there some talk the other day about they'd already been contacted about, and you said?
What had, I, he just, mayor, the mayor told me that the odds of getting somebody else, state whatever, to help finish East Metro was much greater than it would be to have anybody come help him inside the city with any kind of improvements. That's why he would prefer the board to would take that 2 million and do something inside the city, as opposed to turn it to East Metro, because that's more of a regional.
So, what, what other projects in District 3 that you got, I mean, I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Can't say District 3 or.
Joy thing down there on Boltwood Road and, and Thomasville Road, but this doesn't get anything up really, before I say, we get this asphalt overlay.
But Crossgates is in your district, anyway.
Well, I'm, I'm willing, you know, it's part of Brandon, you know, and it's, you know.
You can make an honorary member.
This, this deal here, uh.
Honorary member of Crossgates.
Daniel has a, has a valid point in that, you know, this city, that city's a half, he's half a million for overlaying some streets.
I could, you know, that, that is, would come, I mean.
Well, now, let's, let's pull back James real quick, before it gets too far down the road that we voted for.
Yeah, that was what, 750, what was that, 700?
It, it's actually identified under the bond project list as a million-dollar project.
All right, well, let's.
Let me just put it.
Move on, uh, I don't think, let's try to get more information.
I'll get the information together, and bring it up for discussion on Monday.
All right.
Are we okay to go ahead and have it on Monday's agenda as an item?
Like I said, I'm, he's not gonna be here.
I don't.
You know, you know.
I've got, I've got a school for the next three Mondays that I can't get out of, I mean, I just, I'd like to.
Next two.
Two more, I'll probably know, I, I won't know the last minute.
Let's, let's try to get some information together and, but not plan on having an answer.
All right.
I mean, if we have enough folk, everything there, but, uh, look, we may not even have a quorum, and then Bob.
Just, just play it by ear and see.
We can, we can add it as an agenda item if things work out, if not, then we should just plan to see it on the 15.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, item C, uh, Mr. President, assuming we're ready to move on, item C is a discussion of our burn ban. After this item was, after I'm notified, Ms. Chaney's placed this on the agenda, uh, we received a notification of the governor's signature on a proclamation declaring a statewide burn ban, burn ban that has no exceptions. I think part of our discussion, uh, on our, the county's burn ban was to clarify some issues with respect to exceptions to the burn ban, obviously, the governor's proclamation has no exception, so all of this is moved. Um, Mr. President, I, I defer to you, if you want to have any discussion about this time, it'd be appropriate to do so, if not, we can talk about it later.
It, uh, this was something that I would have discussed if this had not, if the governor hadn't issued a statewide burn ban. A week or so ago, we were looking, uh, in the direction of a burn ban because things were dry, and we had a fire at Piney Woods, and you put out a memo that I agreed to, that I could live with, uh, I have probably more rural farm land than anybody else. And I had a couple of people, farmers, that were in the writing, I mean, we hadn't had the season to do a lot of work in our pastures or fields or clearing, because it's been so wet for two years, and they finally got dry and went to work, and part of that is burning, uh, and I had, I mean, one of the farmers was just running equipment, and it cost a lot of money to have that equipment running, and restaging cost a lot of money, well, he was right in the middle and was burning when his farm.
Clear ground, clear ground, clear, what, what was burning?
No, he's clear, it's clean, it's clear, I mean, he's cut it, it was some wooded trees and stuff.
That's what he's burning, debris.
But he's pushed it up in piles and debris, right, and, I mean, if there's, if there's a definition of a farmer, this guy's a farmer. He don't do anything else but farm, his daddy don't do anything else but farm, his uncle's on, his brothers, I mean, they are farmers. And when I looked at that bottom line, and it said agriculture exempt, I thought, well, I mean, these guys, uh, they know what they're doing, and there's Volunteer Fire Department right around the corner, and we've got our resources. If you think it may be something, go, just be on, on alert. So, I thought, here it is, and sure enough, a few days later, uh, I talked to the guy, or he talks to me, and I say, man, look, we have this burn ban, but it's agriculture exempt, and I'll send you a copy of the letter that we signed, I think, you know, fine, but call our fire coordinator, let's just make sure everybody knows what we're doing, and it all come undone. There is really not agriculture exempt, unless you meet this, this, and this, and you, it almost is no way for that to even be feasible. Says, well, if it's row crops, or it's crops that you harvest, such as corn, or soybeans, or wheat, but then you disc it down to where it's all dirt, and then you're okay to burn it. Well, you, that's not what you do, that's not, that's not how you do it, the burning comes before the disc, you burn it off. Uh, so you can't meet those, those criteria, so from now on, let's just, don't put agriculture exempt to where I get confused and have mud on my face with these farmers who I'm trying.
I thought the same thing you did.
Well, uh, but it, it all got cured when the governor says, I don't care what you thought, it's, none of it's gonna be burned now. That was easy to understand.
Yeah.
And it puts our fire coordinator, myself, and the people on the ground, almost pitted against each other, when we shouldn't be. Because of my misun, well, that one line said agriculture exempt, it didn't say, go look at whatever, or anything, I just, I'm done.
When I saw that, though, I thought about burning, which you don't do this time of year, wheat straw, I thought, well, that could get away, get out of hand quick.
Yep.
But, but there, again, if you'll disc it down, it's no need burning.
Cause these, these burn bans are important.
I understand, and, and Brett explained. I understand. And Brett explained to me, look, it's not the fire. Sure, he's got, I mean, a hundred yards, nowhere it can get anywhere, dirt. These are pretty good-sized piles, and the embers can get in the air and go a mile. And, and we don't even know it until the field is twenty, forty, a hundred acres burnt. I understand, Brett. Don't, I'm, I'm just hard. It takes me a little longer, maybe.
To, to Steve's point, and I think this, obviously, it's something we want all five of guys to be in lockstep on, but my, my thought process is when we, when we build in exemptions with the best of intentions to accommodate certain situations that may not fit the one-size-fits-all rule. You know, that's the frustration that I find constantly about county government work. We have to adopt one-size-fits-all policies, and the problem is that they don't fit. Sometimes they just don't fit everything, and it makes it very difficult to please. My thought process is that if we're gonna affect a burn ban, we're probably just as well-served in our county, have no exemptions of any kind.
Yeah, I see, I agree now.
Just put it in place, and that keeps everybody from having to answer the question, why is that fellow being allowed to do it and I'm not?
Well, it's the best thing for the governor to step in. It takes it off all of us.
Yeah, it really does. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Ms. Wanda.
Item A, New Rankin County Courthouse Facilities Approval Pay Application Number Twenty-Seven to Chris Albritton Construction Company in the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-six cents in authority to issue that check. Chris Albritton has requested ten additional days due to the adverse weather conditions. It's J H N H's opinion that the contractor is entitled to seven additional days as specified in the contract.
Motion to approve without any days added.
Second.
All right, Bob makes motion to approve without the days. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion?
Hey, let me ask just, I mean, just saying one thing, when did we think that building was getting finished? April?
That's what he.
I mean, no, not before, the original, the original.
Yeah, in initial, if everything gone from.
It was April, six months ago.
Spring, early spring, right.
So we're six months behind the original projection, right? And they're still asking more. I got you. In the driest summer we've had.
Well, it was, you know, the summer, but the problem was getting out of the ground.
Yeah. It was wet during the, the winter time.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
And we sued, we're six months off.
That's what I asked you. They got a bunch of weather days, we gave them. I wanna know where we are today from contractual standpoint, which is gonna tell us Monday.
All right. Bob made motion to approve without the additional days. Daniel seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
We have additional business. Did you find out information that we asked to find out for today on the raises? Do we need to discuss that exactly? We're gonna do that on Monday.
No. I think we need to wait till we're all here.
I wanna, I want to have one thing for additional business.
I do, too. I've got some additional business, too, but I was gonna ask about the.
Let me go first, so that in case yours don't override mine, I'll get mad at you and take it out on me. I know most of you have seen the news and things about the safe room in Pila Hachi. That's a federal commitment that you build it this way, and we pay for it, or pay most of it, or whatever. That safe room, tornado room, or whatever you wanna call it, shelter, is there for whoever needs to come to it. Sometime, and I guess last spring, early summer, they asked us to go look at the drainage and parking around it, and we did, and we, Mike and I, felt that, that a lot of this would be, should be on the city. And that gravel would work for the majority of that parking, for their parking. And it's a lot of ball fields, and it should be a tremendous amount of resources to, and the little fifty-eight thousand up here wouldn't touch what would take to asphalt their parking. And they really weren't, I don't think they was expecting. However, there was or is a requirement in the FEMA guidelines that their handicap parking be asphalted. And we're only talking about, I think it's seven parking spots. Talking twenty thousand dollars. FEMA is, well, they got a few other things that they can handle through their own maintenance and things like that. FEMA's give them till the fifteenth of October to get this done, or at least maybe, that's what FEMA says. But if you're working on it, I mean, I think it'd be all right. I'm asking for support that we have Mike with our own people. I mean, we're not talking about a very big area. Do the seven or eight handicap, only the handicap, seven or eight, and that's all, that's the only ones that's hard in black and white that FEMA says you've got to have hard surface. We can do concrete if you want to, but I'd rather not. But anyhow, I'm asking for y'all to support this.
I must have missed that meeting. They're having, they're getting a tornado room over there or something?
No, they've already, that's already built. Back, that money's built. It's not like, it's not the same as our chapter. The inside of it is about this size.
Okay.
That's money they got theirself.
Yeah, years ago. I'd say two, three years ago.
Just to help Bob.
But they've never finished.
So this was part of, it's part of the Pila Hachi Milltown Park, which is their athletic facilities, their recreational facilities that the city invested in. They actually issued bonds to help construct that facility. They qualified for a FEMA grant for a safe room that would be part and parcel of their Milltown Park. So as they've got residents who are there, ball teams that are there, folks that, visitors that come in, if there's inclement weather, they've got a place to go for shelter purposes. So they qualified for that grant. Part of the grant requires that they make certain obligations associated with use of the federal monies to build the facility, one of which obviously is to make it handicap accessible. Building itself is handicap accessible. It's getting to it is the problem. They don't have hardscape. And so my understanding, Steve, was that it was six spaces, but that may have changed. Somebody may have revisited that issue, but whatever the requirement is.
It may be six, but they were saying seven because they have to be wider than what a six, I think that was what they did.
So at least two of those spaces are gonna be van-accessible spaces, which are much more significant than typical car parking. So applying the, what I understand from the FEMA representative, it's just, it's a small area that would accommodate the handicap parking to access the safe room.
What do you think?
I, I would like to make a motion that we have our road manager keep it under twenty-five thousand. I said it shouldn't go over twenty, but I don't wanna get out there and be, keep it under twenty-five thousand dollars, and let's help get this safe room where we can use it.
Second.
All right, this is to add.
Add, and we gotta add it, yeah.
Consideration of construction of handicap-accessible parking at Milltown Park in Pila Hachi.
Uh, so FEMA safe room.
FEMA safe room.
I'd rather, yeah.
FEMA safe room in Pila Hachi. Thank you, Steve.
All right. I'll make that motion. We add that.
Second.
All right. Bob seconds. All in favor?
Ah.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passed to add it. Now I'll make the same motion that we have our road crew. I don't think that we should do, you can do that with our own machine and, okay.
That's approved.
All right. Jared.
Second.
Jared makes a motion to approve not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for these spots. Bob seconds. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like for us to get something, I'm just putting this on the record, but I'd like for us to have something in writing from either FEMA or FEMA One, doesn't matter to me which, that says, this is the specific requirement that will satisfy us.
Okay.
And we'll hear from us again.
Maybe, maybe it'd be good to say, and we're, you know, demanding this be done, or this must be done.
I know that that's happened already.
Something in writing that we would have back us up.
Right, right. Okay, can you handle that, Craig, without anything else?
Yes, sir.
You down on additional business?
I am. You're good.
All right, two things I failed to mention during planning commission. One was, I think Jared may have a problem. I dodged the bullet in my area, but I think Jared may have a problem with the RVs and a hundred and eighty days. Where, you know, right now, there's an ord, is this, is an ordinance, is there or is not?
It's, it's in the zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance where, you know, if you park up an RV on your place, and, you know, you can't use it as a home, but every hundred and eighty days, you gotta ride around the block for a day, so it doesn't qualify as a home. Well, somebody wanna put two out in my area, but fortunately, they decided to go a different direction. And so, and Dwayne was mentioning, it's becoming more of a problem, and maybe we need to look at tightening down the ordinance, you know, to make sure it's a little bit more, got more teeth in it, maybe. Yeah, so I'm gonna turn it back over to them to let them voice their opinions.
We have a definition.
Turn your microphone off, please, man, so I don't hear what the heck you said.
It isn't.
Is it? Damn, death.
Okay. So we have a definition that we like. The only thing is it says it can stay there a hundred and eighty days within a period of one year. We just like to take the reference out to the timeline because it says that it's looked at as a vehicle, not a structure. It says it's a portable or mobile living unit used for temporary human occupancy away from the place or residence of the occupants. No such equipment shall be used for living, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes for more than a hundred and eighty days within a period of one year when parked in a residentially zoned area or in any other location not approved for such use. So we just like to remove the, the time, the hundred and eighty days.
What do you want it to say?
Well, that's the question. How, what would y'all like? Do you think thirty days?
So you take the one eighty out, you put a period at the end, you add this sentence, for purposes of this section of our zoning ordinance, temporary shall be deemed to mean, and then insert how many days you want. Thirty days?
Zero.
It's, temporary's gotta be something. It needs to be, it needs to be some amount of time.
Thirty?
Are you, are you looking for to shorten up the, the temporary days to give you more, mostly go out there and say, okay, now it's been thirty days, y'all are still using this?
Yeah, something easier to track for, so are, are y'all comfortable with thirty days?
Would that still fall where I can hook to it and drive around the block and come back for another thirty?
That's true.
That's, that's.
It says thirty days.
Thirty, thirty, Mike, it looks.
What's the reason to live in it for thirty days? Are they doing some work on their house?
Yeah. We've done exemptions there when they live in one while they rebuild a house.
People actually do try to live in them as dwellings in some cases.
Well, I understand, I mean, I understand that part, and we're not, don't wanna entertain that. But the reason for the days, it would, I mean, because of some pe, something happened to the house and they're working on it, or?
Well, I mean, I think in those type situations, we could maybe use some common sense and understand that it would be leaving as soon as that project, as soon as their, their,
Yes.
their dwelling was where they could live in it again. Yeah, we could work with somebody on that kind of thing. But it's the others that, you know, that's not their intent. They, they do intend to use it as, as living.
But, I mean, they can take it to one of these parks and live in them there.
Sure. They, they could. If, you know, sometimes they say they won't take that year model, or, you know, that kind of thing, so.
I understand. But the, the ordinance is that, I mean, that you can't live in your RV hooked up outside of your house.
See, this, this guy wanted to actually put in a treatment plant system.
Says repair more than a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, didn't he? I mean, he talked about wanting, there's nothing there that says we can't do that, but he can't do that, other than if the health department gives him approval. He wouldn't put a treatment plant system in.
Well, living in.
Jared's got one now that's that away.
Oh, I do.
That's the border zone. Well, I mean, that's what he is, won't.
Is his house there, too?
Oh, yeah.
The house is there and the RV, and they're living in the RV?
Cause they're living in the house.
You talking to Dwayne about the one in Jared's district? What Bob, the one in Bob's is, he has a home. He wanted to add two RVs for family members.
Well, I didn't understand that. I see now.
Yeah. So, we can, I think we can control the circumstance that you mentioned, Steve, where someone is building a house, and they need to be able to stay on site. I think we can address that through our permitting process for the new construction. We'll just, we'll address that.
Rehab it. I mean.
Right, right. Or I could see somebody's house is partially burned, and they, they need to go in and renovate. Well, I, I completely understand how we can accommodate that. Well, there's a permitting part of that that goes with the construction. I think what Renee and Dwayne are suggesting is that we have problems with is the situation where you end up with multiple dwellings on one piece of property, because they're converting that RV into a dwelling. So, uh, that's what we wanna stay on top of. And it seems to me that if we say you got thirty days, which would account for somebody's relative who lives in Montana wants to come to, for whatever reason, I don't know why they'd wanna come, but they may come down here and park and stay for an extended visit. Well, I think a thirty-day visit probably oughta be enough. I bet the folks who are visiting would say that's plenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why are you here?
I understand.
If they're comfortable with thirty days, we can, we can work on the language. I guess, do we have anything coming up on zoning ordinance amendments, Renee?
We have some thing, little items that we can need to add.
Yeah. What I'd like to do is to fold this amendment to the zoning ordinance language that's being proposed, fold it into other amendments that we're doing anyway. You got, we have to make notifications, we have to have a public hearing, so may as well do that as a part of something else we're working on.
Yep.
But now, but that will still leave the door. And we've had this, I've had it two or three times, where someone's house burned where they, they live in it for three, four months.
Yes. Right, so the permission to go beyond what we normally disallow in the zoning ordinance, we will control through the new construction or renovation permit.
Yeah, what we, what we do now in those situations is we make sure that they are ready to pull their building permit and that they're gonna actively start construction. And if they, they meet that criteria, then yes, we'll allow them to live in it during the length of time that the house is being repaired or construction. But, you know, we don't just say, you know, okay, we'll give you a permit to live in the RV, but you're not ready to start. Well, maybe three years later, they'll, you know, so we don't do that. But if they're, they've got plans and actively ready to start, then we'll do that.
As long as they're working on the house, I'm not concerned really. How long, you know, I've done putting in front yard while we build a burnt house. That's fine. Okay, well.
Second thing I got. They're all good there. Do we need to take any extra, wait and let the zoning thing do that? Zoning part do that?
Second thing I got is pole barns. People building homes and pole barns, got permits. We got another one. Didn't we have another one pop up? We saw one down there around Indian Mound. Bet on that, saw that. But another one's popped up. We had found out, went out there and found out they're building a house inside of what they were really supposed to be, just pole barn. And I think they're living in it, other than, I mean, they got their fingers with it. I mean, it's no like, not like we stopped this other guy and made him tear it out, you know.
They're already living in this one.
They're living in this one. So it seemed like this, and they keep saying it's coming more and more. You know, people go up there and get that permit, and they go, well, I'm pouring the slab, let's just go ahead and put a little plumbing in and do some electrical, and, you know, before you know it, got your.
And they can do all that, they just can't put walls living. If they do the plumbing and some electrical.
Pole barn is strictly for agricultural, storage, tractors, hay baleers, that, that type of deal. They're, they're ending up with foundations. They're ending up with walls. They're ending up with nice houses inside of them.
But the problem is they have not been inspected.
Well, and the permit.
For the electrical and plumbing.
Yeah, the permit's at no charge because state law exempts a true agricultural building for agricultural purposes, and they sign an affidavit. You know, that says it will not be used as a dwelling.
You gotta read this thing that Craig's come up with, that they can go to parchment for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you could, but you can build a, a shop. It's not slash pole barn.
Shop for storage, yes, but that's different permit.
You know, I say, no way, you can build a shop if you're gonna work on your tractor, your car, or your, what are you, your own stuff. You can do that and have a, a bathroom in it.
That's true, you can. You just need to get the right kind of permit when you do that. That's the problem. They're not, you know, it would, in my mind, it would have been just as easy for these people to come with the right kind of permit because it, it would allow that building where they are in the zone that they're in. They just didn't go about it in the right manner, and they weren't upfront on what they were really wanting to do.
It doesn't trigger anything just because they're putting a, you can have a shop, and you can put a bathroom or, or a bathroom in a house.
Shower, maybe put a shower in it, too.
I mean, but you're just not gonna wall it up but rooms or anything. It's gonna be an open building.
Well, it's a dwelling if it has a bedroom, a bathroom, and a kitchen.
Yeah, well, I understand it that way. Yeah.
And these that we're talking about have those things.
Yeah, I don't want you to come down. Yeah, I don't wanna come down, somebody wants to build a shop and put a bathroom, a shower in it.
That's not what we're doing.
Issue is an agricultural pole barn. Four, four before it's holding up the tin roof.
Yeah, that's different.
Mysteriously gets a house built in it.
Yeah, you know, I need that, cause you never know, I may have to go out there and sleep on a cot, I at least need that shower and that bathroom, you never know, it may happen.
So, well, I guess what we're looking for here is, what's the attitude of the board for it, I mean, I know what mine is in my district, but I don't know what everybody else's is, we need, I guess have a somewhat of a united front one way or another for them, why, is that what you're looking for in county, what's your marching orders or want to be from these people?
That's right.
They get caught doing this stuff, you know, uh, I mean, I tried to work with a guy that built it, we stopped him and, uh, you know, and what you think about, I'm not sure what to do, other than, we can fine him, I think it's fine, it's one, it's to double the building and the fee, you know, the inspection fee or the permit fee, which I don't think's enough, maybe look at, I don't know.
The one that's actually living in it, I don't know.
He go, we're gonna, he gonna get fined, all of what you do now, I mean, other than, you know, we go to record and, and get them to sign a document stating that they agreed they didn't do it, that, you know, the county has no obligation or no liability for us, we never inspected this thing, if you get burned up in it, they'll come sue us.
Only problem, I guess, is what keeps the next from saying, hey, I just did the same thing, they'll come back. And when they fine me, I'll pay the fine and.
Yeah, and you know, the person that they might sell it to may not know it wasn't inspected.
Well, that's true.
That's what gets us, is that if they sell it and if something happens and they gonna come up to permit office, like, where's, the attorney comes up looking for it, he goes, you know, we wanna sue, y'all didn't inspect it, you know.
Yes, you knew about it and you did nothing, that's where it becomes problematic. Uh, another issue is this, we can get documentation all day long from the, from the wrongdoer, but if there are any children who actually are residing in this non-compliant structure, they can waive their rights. And if the, if a child, anyone under the age of eighteen, a minor, gets hurt because of something that's defective, that was not inspected, the, that exposure never goes away. We would act, to, to clear all of the issues that are, that are brought about by, by this non-compliant act, we would actually have to go to a chance record, ask a chance re-judge to enter an order that says the county will have no responsibility whatsoever, including any responsibility to minor children. That's the only way we can get rid of that exposure, and by the way, it doesn't even have to be a minor child of the people, it can be a visitor. Someone who comes and is just there when a bad event happens, so the exposure just doesn't go away, it can't be made to go away. The solution to the problem would be to tell these folks, tear it down and start over.
That'd be tough one.
On an agricultural pole barn, there are no plans, there's nothing that says from an engineer or an architect, whomever's stating wind speed or any of that information and.
It's a true wood post with trusses on it.
Metal trusses on a chicken house.
Yeah, I, I didn't say that, yeah.
But that's where the problem comes in, when they build a house in there, then we know about it, we will find out about it, they have to go to an engineer or somebody to certify that building at whatever wind speed it is and they're not gonna do it, they're just not gonna, I mean, an engineer's not gonna do it.
No, he's not.
So, I mean, you, you have a, that's where the.
Yeah, it's, it's a real problem, it's a real problem, it's not a problem that we created. We do everything that we can on the front end to warn folks, uh, the language that sent our pole barn affidavit is pretty stout. I mean, I, I drafted it so as to send the message, if you're fibbing, if you're declaring that this is gonna be a true agricultural pole barn, as the law defines that, sign here and indicate that you're, that you'll be committing perjury if it turns out it's something else.
Okay, what if he comes back, okay, what, build a pole barn one day and they came back, or they built a shop, just sort of a structure like we're talking about, or a structure still maybe out of, built out of metal. And they come back sometime later and say, you know what, I do wanna make this a mother loss week, do they, would we go inspect it and say, okay, well, you're gonna need to do this to come up, kinda like what happened out at.
There would be a building permit that would be issued.
So, I mean, they could take that and it may or may not ever come, could go to compliance.
Yes, sir, that's correct, they meet our regulations, that we have an opportunity to then, you know, do our typical inspections and walk it through the process and they pay the appropriate fees for the permit. Yeah, and so I, I wanna make it clear too Jared, because I, I, I don't want there to be any confusion on this, um, the pole barn, agricultural pole barn and shop are not interchangeable. Okay?
How you figure that?
Well, a pole barn is an open structure for the purpose of agricultural storage. A shop would have a separate permit, you wouldn't get an ag pole barn permit to build a shop, in other words, that you know going in on the front end is gonna be a shop. You get a different permit than an ag pole barn. When we say agricultural pole barn, we are literally talking about poles, open structure with a lid on it, and you pull the tractor in, you drop.
But they can have walls on it and have, where you put your hay in it.
Yes, sir.
That's not a pole barn.
Correct.
A bar, but.
It's got walls on it then.
I think, uh, I think we're getting, that, why can't.
Well, I'll tell you why.
When we find somebody like what he's talking about, they done moved in it and they sign that form.
Affidavit.
That says I will not ever build or live or what, this will be my home, why can't we just send it to justice court?
We, we, we do, we have.
Then what, I just think that we, uh, we can't be big government on, I mean, we can't be, they can't be at every place, every, all the time. So when we find them, just say, I'm sorry, but you signed this, you got to go up the street.
And that then make the decision.
And then we're not splitting hairs here.
No, that, that's all right, that's okay, the only reason I was asking these questions, cause I get asked on these questions. And then I, in a situation, somebody, uh, like say builds a pole barn and then later they're gonna go, I'm gonna turn it into my shop, well, all it means, you just put walls on it and a roll-up door.
Well, I mean, like, something like that, they can work with these people and he can go out there and say, this is what you need to do to bring it up. But when you sign a document that says I will not put living quarters or live in this.
I agree with that.
And three years later, we get a complaint, not, we're just out there with binoculars seeing who's living in their barn, but we get a complaint and you go out there and they obviously are living in the barn. Then I'd say, you don't argue, you just take this piece of paper and say, look, we gotta do our job and you're gonna have to take this.
Right, and probably the best, the best thing that's come out of this discussion is that everybody is hearing that sentiment and is in agreement that we have the forms and the documentation in place that we have in place for this very purpose, is that we know that sometimes folks are gonna try to get around what the regulation is, they're just gonna do it, and so we need, um, your, your staff needs to hear that if they do move it up to justice court, which is how it's designed to work, Steve, you put your finger right on it, that there will be support from the board to, to allow that process to play all the way out, just let it happen. Even if it becomes a pressure point to have to deal with, at some point we got to set an example.
It's more pressure not being consistent, I think.
That's right, and that's the whole point, he's like, now they know what they need to do, you know.
I mean, you know when somebody's living there and when they're not, and I don't think that you're gonna come in here because somebody's kids had friends over and they spent the night in the barn, camped out out there, I don't think that's what y'all are gonna bring in here. It's, I mean, it's gonna be rock solid they're living in.
These are houses with granite countertops, marble showers.
Wow.
These are not, these are, I'm talking about their nights.
Maybe I need to move in my barn, if I move in my barn, let him do it.
All right, that, that, did y'all get what you needed out of that?
Yeah, a whole lot of conversation.
I, I, that's all the.
You had two things you said?
I, I got them both. He went three.
Okay.
We're done.
All right.
Pull the Mike word.
No, I'm sorry, I do have another one, I'm sorry, you said Mike Word, that's right, Mike Word, come on up and tell us. Your fault, your fault, I was ready to roll, you said Mike Word's name.
Mike, you're a good man.
Hold on just a second.